Angela, when you're ready, would you please call the roll?
Winters.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Sherman. Hamilton.
Here.
Hanford.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
All right. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 18th, 2020. And item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held March 4th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Oh, I got one more item. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $163,204.91 and payroll expenses of Now, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters, second by Mr. Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hanford.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. A is the Tourism Commission meeting on February 19th, 2020. Mr. Martin, you have a report for us?
We had a few more items than normal, I think, just due to the fact that we didn't have a couple, three meetings in a row, so they piled up, maybe I guess you could say. First request that came through was the Neskotanga Arts Festival. That was fully funded. Next one was the Big Cruisin' Car Show. That also was fully funded. After that, we had the Alva's Crazy Cool Boulevard Cruise, which is different than the Cruisin' Car Show. Fully funded it. And then a request that was, oh, I guess out of the ordinary for that committee, for our committee. We had discussion with the Arena Authority. Todd Holder came and talked to us. We committed $150,000 to the future arena project. And that will go to, I guess you could say, the initial operations of it, some of the salaries, just an initial boost to help really get it going once that starts, just because there's going to be so many moving parts. That was voted on unanimously. There were a couple of other things that we discussed. There was no action on anything after that. Be glad to answer any questions if you haven't.
Couple of items are on our agendas, so.
Connor, when you say fully funded, that means what they requested?
What they requested, sorry.
You didn't fully fund the Neskotanga Arts Festival?
No, no, sorry. Fully funded the request.
You did the request, okay.
Sorry, yes.
Any other questions, Connor? All right, thanks, Connor. Item B is the Alva Public Library Board Meeting for March 2nd, 2020. I'm trying to slow down.
No, it's okay. My thing's not, it's loading the wrong month. There we go. I got it. That was loading the wrong month.
Mr. Eckhart.
Okay. All right. There we go. Okay. So we had our regular library meeting. We talked about, it was pretty short. The thing that took up the largest portion of our time was we had an extended conversation, again, about the fees and fines for the library, that they had started to divide up the tracking for fines, copies, and faxes. Usually those are together as one thing. They started to separate those, see how much that came in. And so what we had requested was that the library staff research and write a policy going fee-free, meaning that they will, looking at a policy that would no longer have fines for late books, services, things of that nature. This is something that's been going on in a large portion of libraries across the country. Director Hamilton said that it actually helps checkouts and things like that. It actually makes people, because she said a lot of people will just get a fine and just never come back because they don't want to or don't have the funds to pay for that fine. So that's a policy that will probably come across the council here in the next month or two, I would assume. She did pass out the Library Summary Youth Program Schedule, which had all of the meetings for June and July. Lots of things going on, so almost every day of the week. There's some club, activity, organization, something going to be going on at the library. The Friends and Libraries Public Chocolate Fantasy was scheduled for April 2nd. I was notified that that has been postponed to a later date to be determined, so we do not have a date for that yet. That's usually a really big, good turnout for that, and there's a lot, it makes a lot of money for the Friends of Library. And then the last thing was, I was told as I came in, I was, they wanted me to mention that, just so everybody knows that, just as an example, Enid's Public Library has closed all in service of the library until a date in May. So, and I believe that our library is kind of looking at this point in time at any changes or policies they might need to update to make sure to keep, you know, keep her safe and whatnot, so.
Council having questions? Thank you. Next item is the Arena Authority meeting on March 3rd, 2020. I don't have anything other than what was in the packet and probably what's going to be discussed later this evening. Do you have anything?
No.
Any council, any council questions I need to take to the Arena Authority? All right. Item D is the Parks and Buildings Committee meeting on March 3rd, 2020. Mary. You weren't there. Chris was there.
Primarily what we discussed.
Oh, yeah, I was there.
We primarily just discussed some, mostly what we talked about was some clarification on some of the things that they had been working on with the pool, the sandblasting and the moving forward of the engineers. There was some miscommunication about a couple of things that needed to be clarified. At this point in time, they're still sandblasting. It's two blocks from my house, I hear it all the time, so they're still going. And they're making significant progress on that, but that probably wasn't a Parks and Building meeting, though. I mean, it kind of was, but. Yeah, anyway, so we were there for part, that's kind of our meeting with them, and then they continued their meeting after we left. So that's really all we discussed, if I can't think of anything else we talked about. That was pretty much it. It was just mostly for clarification purposes on a couple of things. Some of the prisoner usage and some things that there was some confusion about how that was divvied out, and I think we got that cleared up, so.
All right. Does the council have any questions? At the Airport Commission meeting on March 9th, it was a pretty short meeting. The only action item was to approve the fuel purchase that the council approved at the last council meeting. Happy to answer any questions if you guys have any. The Cemetery meeting on March 11th. Angelica, do you have anything with that?
No, I was not able to attend the meeting. Chris, would you like to talk about?
We discussed action on the policy of mowing standards, and they came to the conclusion, no matter what standard we'd set, if I don't have the adequate manpower, we're not going to be able to keep up with it. What else did we discuss? We discussed having Crinchell come up and train me on how to properly prune trees so as not to cut them wrong and cause them to die. And then he came up and assisted with that, and it's a bough along of what we discussed. Then went over, they went over, looked over the budget.
Council have any questions? Thank you. Finance Committee meeting on February 21st, February 24th, and March 6th, 2020. Dr. Haniford.
I'm assuming that's 16th?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll do the 16th. I was, I don't know, not able to go to the other meetings because of the hospital board meeting at the same time, but tonight we reviewed and signed large, or signed the claims list. Some of the large claims besides our payroll in the general fund was our server email upgrade, which is about $10,000. Bulk fuel, almost $11,000. Hotel tax phone with the Big Cruisin' Car Show at $25,000. Airport fund engineering fees over $43,000. AEDA debt services was about $15,000. And then the AUA fund was debt services of a little over $33,000. Our sales tax this month was down from last month about 3%. We did get preliminary indications from our next month, which was March, which really looks positive. We're going to do some checking on that, but it's a large increase that we're excited about. Our cash position continues to get better. We did talk at the finance meeting about some, with a transition and with Angelica, maybe some new ways of reporting, getting some more information to the finance committee and to the council. Position-wise, our main goal is to get the City Business Manager hired. I think those applications end April 13th, and we'll not move forward on any other one positions until we get that hired. Other projects, we talked briefly tonight about looking at some CBDG grants that might help us with our well projects in the future. And then the booster station on Oklahoma Boulevard for the water tank, a little bit of delay just with weather right now, but hopefully we'll get going on that. We'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions, Dr. Haniford? Thank you, Bill. Next item is the Mayor's Report. Just as a reminder to all the folks out there in everywhere, but especially here in Alva, it is census time, and they estimate that communities, or our community anyway, could have, or I think it was the way it's estimated, is about $1,800 a person available in federal funding based on census information. So if you have the census information or you go online to fill it out, please remember that's very important to our community, and I would encourage everybody out there to help remind others to do their census. I also have been in brief contact with OMMS about the search for the City Business Manager. Steve Whitlock has shared with, the position got posted very quickly after our last council meeting, and so he is currently, you know, taking applications, and we're waiting to see what they come up with, and then we'll put the search committee to work. And then the other item I want to talk about just briefly during my report is that it was, I'm going to be asking that all of our future agendas have an item for new business. I was mistaken when I thought that we already had that on the agenda. I just know that's something that's rarely, anything that we can discuss in a meeting. It has to be something of an emergency nature, and so oftentimes a new business item is just an item that you skip over. But we won't be able to take any action this evening, but we will during our council comments take some time to discuss COVID-19 coronavirus, and council tells me that's okay. I'm happy to answer any questions. Next item is the Interim City Business Manager's Report.
Since our last meeting, the auditors were in for their annual audit. We are still finishing compiling information for the auditors. Hopefully have that wrapped up this week, and then we will get a report back from them, I would anticipate, fairly quickly. They're usually pretty quick to turn that around once everything is done. Our staff started the budgeting process this, this last week, so they'll be working to get their needs and their expenses for next year gathered up so that we can visibly come out that. We tentatively had the budget retreat scheduled for April 4th, but we'll just see how that works out with everything else that's going on right now. Just an update on the professional building. I know in past meetings, I think there was misunderstanding that the boulder mediation was complete. We've been trying to find someone to do some duct work cleaning in two of the suites. They, the duct size is commercial grade size, and so there was some difficulty locating equipment that would be big enough to clean the duct work there. So that has been scheduled for the two remaining suites, and then that will finally be wrapped up, and we can move forward there. A couple of projects that we're working on, Dr. Haniford had mentioned the Oklahoma Booster Pump Station. We should start seeing some work on that, and then following weeks, weather permitting. Water Department staff finished retrofitting two wells in the well field. We've sent off water quality testing to DEQ, and then DEQ will have to come on site to inspect those two wells, and as soon as we get the green light, those will be put back into production. So definitely made some good progress there. And then I guess just an update to everyone, I was out of the office last week. I know before Joe Don left, he had mentioned that I had received a scholarship to do some training, so I spent last week in, in training, hopefully learning some new information, and that I'll be able to use. And Dr. Haniford talked about some, some new information to the finance committee. Learned a lot on some information. I've got some good resources of things that we can, that we can use moving forward, so hopefully we'll see some things from that. I would be happy to entertain any other questions that you guys have.
Does the council have any questions? Item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. If anyone would like to make a comment, you can address the council, and we'll give you two minutes per speaker, and we just ask that the speaker stand up to him and identify themselves.
Philip Gillem, live outside the city. I've got property in the city, but I don't get to vote, so I like to kind of keep abreast of what's going on. This $150,000 for the tourism application for the event center, is that, what is that going to do when there's nothing here involving the event center that's going to affect any tourism until something has progressed towards the building of it and the planning of it? How long's this $150,000 supposed to last then? You know, for the allocating that for pie in the sky right now? Be nice if, put that towards fixing some of the streets so we don't have to get front end alignments every six months.
We're going to discuss that later in the agenda, and hopefully we can answer your questions.
Seems like a lot of money for something that doesn't exist.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, thank you. Item eight is discussion and action to increase the authorized purchase cost of a new Ford F-550 rescue truck off of the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed, actually, it should be $1,270 instead of $1,000. This was, has already been approved. It, the total purchase? $151,000. That's what I was looking for. But this was, this was an amount that the business manager could have approved, but felt like it was, you know, bringing before the council to authorize the increase in that. The vehicle should be here. It's already here.
Here in use.
Council have any questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to increase the authorized purchase cost of a new Ford F-550 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $1,270.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Haniford and second by Mrs. Hamilton to increase the authorized purchase cost of new Ford F-550 rescue truck not to exceed $1,270. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Ham, or Haniford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item nine is discussion and action on the renewal of the annual software maintenance agreements with Tyler Technology for an amount not to exceed $33,472.18. Originally, you can read there in the background information, this is our ENCODE system, which we started back in 2000 for just under $100,000. We've continued with Tyler Technologies with the, for the encoder system since that time, and this would be the annual maintenance fee. This is an amount that exceeds the business manager purchasing limitations, so it is here for us to approve. Angelica, I was looking to see what we spent last year, is it the same amount?
It was $31,000 and just a little over $31,000. So it does increase a little bit every year, but it allows us to keep our, all of our ENCODE information up to date and keep all of the, all of the software fixes and patches in there, and then it also grants us 24/7 support as well.
How often do we have to call them?
On a regular basis. I mean, when things come up that we don't know how to handle, you know, maybe, we had an issue today where something was hung up in the system, in the background of everything, and we couldn't get payments to post that we collected today. So we had to call ENCODE and work with them to get it, get things taken care of, and they remote into our system, help us do whatever needs to be done, or if there's something that we're unsure how to do that we, maybe it's a training issue that we haven't learned how to do, they can help us with that. But I would say on a weekly basis, we call them, I would say one to two times a week at a minimum.
I suppose they're comparable to other companies that.
Yes. I don't know that it would be the exact amount, but it, I mean, it is comparable to what we would be paying with another accounting software company.
Any other questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that we would do the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $33,472.18.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Stelling and second by Mr. Winters to approve the renewal of the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hanford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 10 is discussion and action to acknowledge the payment of $26,300 to RACE by the Alva Tourism Tax Commission. The tourism tax dollars are not able to be spent on anything other, those are the hotel motel tax dollars. They're not able to be spent on anything other than tourism items that are determined by the Tourism Tax Commission. The amount that is here for RACE exceeds the purchasing limit for the business manager, so therefore we're bringing it before council to have the approval or the acknowledgement.
Same amount as last year.
Same amount as last year. Are there any other questions? I'd entertain a motion.
Question, is this amount for reimbursing for last year or just getting a, preparing for this year?
This is for this year, so you can see, Dr. Haniford just talked about that we were making a payment to RACE. Well, that was for the one that was approved in the previous budget year. So this, this gets it, everything squared away so that when they are ready to be reimbursed for the items that were approved by Tourism Tax Commission, that it's ready to be issued.
Notice the money won't be going out till after they firm in the receipts.
It's not tied up till afterwards, and then they're reimbursed after, but they don't even need all of that money. It's not, it's just up to that amount. If they spent, need 24, then we write them a check for 24.
I'd entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
Make a motion to acknowledge a payment of $26,300 to RACE by the Alva Tourism Tax Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Eckhart and second by Mrs. Hamilton to acknowledge the payment of $26,300 to RACE by the Alva Tourism Tax Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hanford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 11 is discussion and action to acknowledge payment of $150,000 to the Alva Arena Authority by the Alva Tourism Tax Commission. Again, this is funding from the hotel motel tax, cannot be used for anything other than tourism items, as was determined by the voters of the community. The tax is only collected at hotels, so if you're worried about that being any.
I'm worried about my tax bill for that.
And this says construction, maintenance, and continuing operation.
Do we have any updates on, on this? I've been on this for six years, we've been hearing about this, but we haven't ever seen much. Do we know what's going on with it?
I think part of this is also going to help them with the grant that they're trying to get, showing the support, so I think, number one, the money, it's not going to them right now.
Yeah.
It's not going to go to them unless they get it built, unless they start doing anything. That's probably the biggest reason they need to get approved through the.
It's the grant and the loan to, to get that excess money that they.
It's showing a commitment from the city as well, to cover that grant. I mean, I mean, if that money were to be paid out to them, you have to keep in mind also that, in a way, that you can look at it as an investment. I mean, think of the tourism that's going to be coming in, you know, to the hotels and all of that. Committee commits that money to it, you would likely see that in return, so just helping them take those initial punches when you first start a business.
And anytime this stuff is, whoever requested has to turn in receipts to be paid, so you know exactly what is going to pay.
If the arena ever happens, which I, that would be a terrible thing in my opinion, but that money would never be paid out.
Correct. If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion.
I may, we acknowledge payment of $150,000 to Alva Arena Authority by the Tourism Tax Commission.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Stelling and second by Dr. Haniford to acknowledge payment of $150,000 to the Alva Arena Authority by the Alva Tourism Tax Commission. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item 12 is remarks and inquiries by council members. So in, in light of Governor's旨 yesterday, having declared a state of emergency for the, for the state of Oklahoma, we were, you know, included in that declaration as a political subdivision of the state, which is what we are. After talking with Rick, it does not look like we need to take any action necessarily to be able to have access to. to be able to have access to federal disaster relief fundings if our community were to become affected by it. That being the, being said, there may be some things that I think that were probably assigned to the Public Safety Committee and possibly Personnel Committee to look at what we do as City Hall in terms of our mitigation efforts as well as our response efforts should it become something that turns into that. We do have a little bit of time here to, you know, for other remarks from other Council members. We just can't take any action this evening, but it would give us an idea of the things that we need to discuss in committee moving forward. I think one of the main things I want to say is we want to make sure that people understand the issue, not the, you know, the fantasies that have been cast out there of what, you know, sometimes is causing some panic in the overpurchase of toilet paper. I'm sorry, Mary, but...
We don't have any left again.
Sell it all. But, you know, the facts out there that this has had a major impact on certain areas of the United States as well as the world. It's got a very, you know, small footprint in the state of Oklahoma, but that's not to say that that won't change. But I think it's worth us being prepared to respond in the event that that happens, and so anyway.
Just a question here. Okay, the schools are going to be closed for...
Yep, the schools are going to be closed at this point through April 6th.
Right.
I was on a call this afternoon with Governor Shitt's office with the rest of the mayors and city business managers. I think there's over 500 people on the call today. Crazy. But, you know, the governor said that there are no plans to shut down any of the supply chains, so supplies coming into and out of Oklahoma are not projected to be affected. He is not proposing that businesses close, or, he is actually recommending though that there's consideration given by businesses, not a mandate, but consideration given by businesses to expand their hours, to allow senior citizens to have a designated time where they can come in and shop and not be at as great a risk of being exposed to people that are carrying the virus, if there are people out there carrying the virus. And they're working to get the testing kits out to all of the counties that have health departments. There's 68 counties in the state that have health departments, and so they're working to get testing kits out to those areas where they're going to be needed, probably in relation to, you know, where they think they'll need them most, not that they couldn't be moved around from one location to another if necessary. Didn't have a lot of guidance as far as that goes for municipal operations. I think, you know, it's fair for us to definitely keep an eye on things, and if we feel like our employees or our citizens are going to have any increased level of risk, that we should take some appropriate actions, which, you know, could include everything, anything from, you know, paid time off from work and, you know, stuff like that, to maybe altering some of our services that aren't essential to operating our community. So, I mean, those are all considerations that I think would be well discussed in one of our, in our committees to come up with some plans to bring back to Council for, you know, maybe approval, and if necessary, special meeting for such.
What about employees with children that are going to be home now for two extra weeks? Are we going to, that's another thing we need to figure out how to...
It's another consideration.
With no daycares in Alva, well, limited daycare for now.
That is...
No openings would be a better rate of...
Yeah, no openings.
I can give a quick update. I mean, our Lutheran Church is working with the person that's getting our building. One of the inspections is complete, or we're waiting basically for the State Department to come in and give sign off on that, so hopefully...
Oh, that'd be nice.
I don't know. I hate to even say timeline because you just never know, but everything's ready for the building. She's preparing, but it's just waiting on that final sign off, so hopefully there might be some help at some point through that daycare.
The governor's declaration of an emergency does lighten some of the regulatory burden that we would normally experience in order to carry out like our EMS services or even what the other healthcare providers in the community experience regulatory wise, regulation wise. And so there may be, depending on if our system gets overburdened, there may be some other things in our tool shed to be able to come out and fight this, whether that's training people who otherwise would be unqualified to do things like driving ambulance or, you know, stuff like that, or any number of, you know, situations that might come up as a result of this, you know, this virus. I do want to make sure that we don't, that we respect what's going on and make good decisions and be responsible to ourselves and each other. You know, it's one of those things that, with this, you've seen it shut down entire countries, but you've also seen it not have much of effect at all in other countries. And I think the things, the steps that are being taken right now at state level and then the healthcare community, as well as with the, you know, major events that have been postponed or canceled, I think those were probably extreme steps, but probably important steps for us, hopefully being one of those examples of not a major impact on the health of our state or our community. So just all things to consider as we move forward, but I don't want people to think that these measures are, well, the only, but we're never going to know if we did too much or overreacted, but we will definitely know if we didn't do enough. So I don't think there's anything for us to be worrisome for. I don't think we need to stop going and going to the stores or eating in the restaurants or anything like that, but we do need to, it's kind of like a storm watch. We've got to watch the weather and see where it's coming, and if it's coming towards us, we need to make appropriate, you know, take appropriate actions to make sure we're all okay. That's where we're at right now. How many times did the storms miss us? So again, not to make light of it, but not to, not to overstate it either.
Maybe something to help get info out. I believe there was a decision made at the hospital today, in there about restrictions as far as...
As far as visitor access?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't see it, but I think probably yes, they, the hospital has restricted visitor access. They'll be requiring everybody to call in advance before they're screened, bringing into the building. It's just a preventative measure to make sure that the healthcare providers know what they're getting into when people come in the building. If we get all the healthcare providers infected, then we don't have anybody to take care of anybody. So it's a precautionary step, not to say that nobody, that we're not going to provide care, but it is a measure to say that the care that we provide is not going to be in jeopardy. Nursing homes are doing the same. Doctors offices are doing the same recommendation right now, is if you feel sick, call your doctor or call the urgent care before you show up so that they can meet you at the door with a mask and gloves and whatever else might be necessary to keep everybody safe. No cases in Woods County. Closest case is K County. There's only 10 cases confirmed positive statewide as of earlier today, and the State Health Department is updating their website daily. Centers for Disease Control is also updating their website daily, and you can see what's going on in other states around us. I would say for people wanting to know what they can do in their own homes, public service announcement, I guess, the CDC.gov website, they've got links on there for how to protect yourself and your family. They've got links on there for healthcare providers, for churches, for, I don't know, check it out, there's quite a few resources available for people to know how to respond without, you know, panicking over what's going on. Just be responsible and take care of ourselves. Are there any other Council remarks or inquiries? If you're on any of those committees, we'll be scheduled on meetings. All right, if there is nothing else, we are adjourned. Now we will call to order the regular Alva Utility Authority Meeting. Angela, when you're ready, will you please call the roll?
That's the utility?
Yes.
Tell all the regular people. Yes. Okay. Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Hamilton?
Here.
Hanifert?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of a consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 18, 2020, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $93,868.08 and payroll expenses of $65,865.24. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
We'll adjourn the utility authority meeting, and we will open the regular Alva Economic Development Authority Meeting. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Okay. Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Hamilton? Here.
Hanifert?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 18, 2020. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $29,028.43 and payroll expenses of $16,041.53. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Mr. Winters and second by Mr. Eckhart to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hanifert?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And Stelling?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We are adjourned.